We do have a quorum, right?
To, yes, we do.
Okay. Um, I'm, I want to let our guests know that I will be going walking forth between different tabs on my computer. So excuse me in advance if I have to pause a little bit to get to where I'm supposed to be. Um, we want to go ahead and uh, welcome everybody. Thank you for being here this evening. We do want to ask that you acknowledge our meeting norms. Uh, they are that we want to remember that all children are our why. We ask that you be present and prepared to participate. We ask that you exercise equity of voice and respect each other's time. We want to make sure we're speaking our views without fear of judgment and retaliation. And we also ask that you think before you speak, assume goodwill and listen for understanding and seek clarity where you need to. We want to call our meeting to order under provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of The Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Tuesday, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two at the Administration Center, eighty eight fifty five Dunn Road, Hazelwood, Missouri, and on the district website. May I have a recommendation to adopt the agenda as posted?
So moved.
Mrs. Shannon.
Sorry, Mr. Tyson?
Hi.
Dr. Thurman?
Hi.
Dr. Martin?
Hi.
Ms. Bush?
Hi.
Dr. Grace?
Hi.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Hi. Thank you for that. Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. As we shared prior to the winter break, the board is interested in hosting a listening tour where we will have a series of meetings to hear directly from district students, parents, staff, and community members. This is in addition to the strategic planning work we're doing. This will help inform our short term and long term plans as we respond to the needs of our community. Tonight's meeting will focus on safety. We know that as we return to in-person learning, that there have been many challenges, not only in Ferguson Florissant but across the nation. We're all adjusting to working, teaching, and learning face to face after an extended period, period of interacting virtually. Many of the challenges in our schools have revolved around safety. We developed a thought exchange where stakeholders share their concerns around safety in the schools. We've dedicated this meeting to focusing on solutions to those concerns. But first, we'll hear from a few of you in your own voice prior to moving on with this meeting. And this is the point where we would call for public comments, but we uh, do not have any to share with you this evening. Am I correct in stating that, Mr. Hampton?
It is correct. We had one person who submitted a comment um, in time to be added, but uh, she chose not to uh, share that publicly for the whole group. She'll share uh, in her breakout room.
Okay, perfect. All right. And so I'm going down here. Okay. Um, in addition to the thought exchange where stakeholders had an opportunity to share their concerns regarding safety, the board has allocated. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute.
Yeah, that's that part you just covered.
Is that the public comments part?
That was the public comments part, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. So now at this time, Dr. Davis and Kevin Hampton will share the results of the thought exchange uh, that was conducted so that we can hear what concerns were brought forward by our community.
Thank you, Dr. Powell Walker. Good evening, everybody. Uh, just quickly, I want to say, and then Kevin's gonna dive into some of the details of um, uh, of the data. Uh, but let me say especially for folks in the community who may have not have used Thought Exchange much. Now, we've had lots of community meetings, lots of school meetings. Um, and Thought Exchange has been put in place in a word voice to make sure that your voice is at the table. And often when we have meetings, um, you know, I've gotten comments from folks in the community, albeit the board meeting or other meetings that uh, this, you know, the agenda is already set. We've already decided what we're gonna do and this is just perfunctory. And that absolutely is not the case. And Thought Exchange is a piece of evidence to say that your voice is important. Uh, that is why you got the, the Thought Exchange in advance so that we could organize this meeting around what the community and, and that's all of you, all of us. Uh, what, what's our priority so that we can organize and have these discussions this evening around those topics? Uh, and so I just want to say how important that is because as we continue to go forward, uh, we want to keep using Thought Exchange to make sure that your voice, we use it with students and their voice and parents and so forth. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hampton. And he's gonna share uh, what you've gone through already and give you some data so that as we get ready for our breakout sessions and you have those discussions in those sessions uh, that you can bring your additional thoughts uh, to that. Um, and we can problem solve around it so we can come up with uh, solutions together. So again, uh, on behalf of the board and myself, thank you for being here. We're welcome to this meeting and I will continue to do everything we can to include your voice. Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and uh, thank you, Dr. Powell Walker, uh, board and uh, all of uh, our stakeholders who are joining us tonight uh, from your various roles. Uh, can you see the uh, slide there on your screen? So uh, as you can see throughout the month of January, we've asked our students, parents, staff, and community members to share your concerns about uh, safety with us using Thought Exchange as Dr. Davis shared. Uh, as a result of that, we have had fourteen hundred and ninety-one participants, thirteen, uh, who shared thirteen hundred and thirty-one thoughts and gave thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one star ratings. Um, as you, i- if you've used Thought Exchange before, uh, you know that the star ratings are what uh, allow us to see what rises to the top as the most important uh, topics uh, according to the people who are participating in, in the uh, Thought Exchange. Um, I think there may be a couple of folks who have their mics unmuted. If you would mute your mic, that would help us be able to um, communicate this better. So just looking at the breakdown of participants, you can see that um, the largest uh, group sharing in this Thought Exchange was uh, parents, grandparents, caregivers, or guardians with thirty-six percent of the participants falling into that category. Second largest group was teachers with uh, thirty percent. Uh, sixteen percent of our uh, respondents were students. Um, eight percent were support staff members, two percent administrators, one percent community members, and then seven percent who identified in some other way as a part of the process. The question that we asked was, um, the Ferguson Florissant School District is seeking stakeholder input for the purpose of creating safer schools. What are some concerns you would like to share about the safety of Ferguson Florissant Schools? And so you can see from this word cloud, uh, some of the words and phrases that rose to the top from your thoughts. Um, and the size of the text indicates the um, the popularity as far as the number of times that appeared in the exchange. As we dug deeper into the thoughts that were shared, we received uh, and, and we received your highest star ratings. We found that these five themes emerged. Behavior and classroom expectations, fights, prevention and consequences, weapons and security, both personnel and practices, parent involvement, how to involve more parents and how parents can help with reducing fights and other one unwanted behavior, and then staff safety. And you'll see when we go into the breakout rooms that we also have, um, because of the large number of folks tonight, we've added a couple of extra rooms or just general solutions that will be focused um, there. Um, going a little deeper, the top three thoughts that were shared um, in, in the exchange and this uh, you can see these are ranked number one, two, and three of the thirteen hundred and thirty-one thoughts. Um, those are, uh, I, I want teachers to feel safe and respected. Continue setting clear boundaries for students and setting consequences. Students who do not have boundaries and have not experienced consequences will repeatedly disrupt the teaching and the learning of those around them. And that uh, garnered the highest uh, ranking of, of all of the thoughts that were shared. Uh, second was more accountability. If students are walking around skipping classes with no consequence, it's a cure, it's a security risk in multiple ways. And the third one, parents should not be able to refuse to attend a parent meeting, especially if the child has shown some sort of violence, fights, guns, et cetera. Parents are the first line of intervention when it comes to their children. Children engaging in fighting or worse must have parent involvement. Um, I'd like to share uh, just a handful of other thoughts. What we did was we went through um, and looked at, at many of the thoughts, but, but specifically read through all uh, of the top uh, fifty thoughts, and I'll stop sharing the screen so that I can go ahead and read from this other uh, list I have here. Um, these are uh, some of the thoughts that were selected from the top fifty uh, highest star rated. Uh, my biggest concern is that students do not listen to adults. More than ever, students just flatly defy reasonable requests from adults. It's important because students complying with reasonable requests is a foundation of safety. More discipline and parent involvement should be looked into. Parents are more important to this problem than the school district. Reward students who are making good choices and do not lower standards due to problems. Raise the bar. We need a community-wide change in the way we think about weapons and violence. Things that happen in school are directly related to things happening in the community. Students who make threats against school are students that are students who should have severe consequences. Students who make threats should be on long-term suspension so students will be less likely to make threats. In-class negative behavior with no consequences is a huge problem in our schools. No consequences or restorative practices lead to overall safety concerns. Students experience um, their negative behavior as accepted. A student that brings a weapon to school no matter what age should have more of a consequence than a ten-day suspension. This is an environment which students, teachers, and staff feel unsafe at their school. Enforce behavior standards. Students cannot learn if behavior is out of control. Share with you here, I'm concerned that in my primary school, we have a few K-two students who physically hit teachers. This is never okay. Teachers need to feel safe also. I feel that students are not being held accountable for inappropriate behaviors, and while it does not have to be punitive, there has to be learning. If students are taught how to behave appropriately, they will choose to behave better than teachers can teach while students focus on learning. Um, and so those are just a handful of the top thoughts that emerged uh, based on your uh, ratings and the ratings of the folks who participated in that. Uh, in a moment, we're going to break, go into breakout rooms where board members and administrators will facilitate a conversation focused on solutions to the concerns that have been expressed. Uh, your facilitators will share the theme and a few examples of the concerns that have been shared. Then we want to hear from you. We know that you have ideas and suggestions for solutions to address these issues. The role of the board members and administrators is to listen. We won't be recommending or providing solutions at this time, but we'll be listening to hear your suggestions for solutions. Uh, we'll record and reflect on those solutions and look for ways to implement your solutions where possible. And again, the purpose of the Thought Exchange was generate a large list of concerns. Uh, you and the folks who participated in that Thought Exchange did generate a large list of concerns. These next few moments are going to be used to help focus on um, looking for solutions to the concerns that were shared. These next few moments may be a little messy, um, and we appreciate your patience and grace as we move into the breakout rooms. So we have created uh, two rooms for each of those five topics. Um, plus uh, when we saw that we have uh, in fact, a hundred and sixty-five participants in the, the meeting here this evening, uh, we created two extra general solution breakout rooms. And so um, you should be able, uh, in a moment, you should be able in a moment to be able to choose the breakout room that you want to join. Um, I'll read that list for you uh, again so that you'll know which uh, rooms are um, are covering which topics. And then um, you'll choose the room that you want to go into. Um, but we may shift a few folks around just to try to balance it, uh, balance out the size of the rooms. Um, so if you'll listen carefully here, I'll share these rooms so that you uh, know which room to go into. Uh, room number, room number one will be, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I wanted to just say too that since there's going to be a share out at the end by each group, if we could just remind everybody to be careful to select a person uh, in their group during the time you're working together to share it at the end.
I appreciate you saying that. Uh, and also um, let me just add to that, and that is uh, you'll see in your uh, rooms, there'll be a padlet. Um, and if you've never used that before, your facilitator will um, drop a link in the chat so that you'll be able to, to see that. Pay close attention that you click on the uh, link for your, the theme of your room. Um, and you'll be able to add your thoughts there and uh, because we'll be split up into all these rooms, the board's going to want to see the solutions that are put forward. And so if you or uh, uh, one of the facilitators in your room can make sure that thoughts are added to that padlet, that will help. Um, did you have anything else, Dr. Powell Walker?
Um, I did not.
Okay, I'll go ahead and share these uh, themes for the rooms. And then uh, if you see a, a theme that is one that you'd like, uh, just know again, there are two rooms for each theme. So uh, room one and two are uh, for the behavior theme, behavior in classroom expectations. Room three and four uh, will focus on fights, prevention, and consequences. Rooms five and six will focus on uh, weapons and security, personnel and practices. And then uh, room seven and eight focus on parent involvement, how to involve more parents and how parents can help with reducing fights and other unwanted behaviors. Room uh, nine and ten focus on staff safety. And then room eleven and twelve, uh, you'll be able to focus on whatever solutions that you would like. Uh, we've planned for you to have um, a, enough time so that people in your room can uh, can talk and, and and share um, their thoughts. Uh, the point of this meeting again is to have the bulk of it focus on um, on your opportunity to share your voice and share your solutions. And so um, we'll monitor the time, we'll uh, we'll check in with the, the groups. Um, but right now we're planning on you having uh, about thirty minutes to be able to um, to get in there and uh, and share uh, your thoughts and concerns. Um, your facilitators will share some norms, but uh, I just ask you to remember to um, you know, be um, to be aware of your airtime so that uh, one or two people don't monopolize the, the whole conversation.
Um, Hampton?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I wanted to say something to our audience tonight, just briefly before we go um, to, into the break room. So my understanding is that our purpose is to hear from the school community concerns about school safety and to reflect on what has been shared by many through the Thought Exchange, and also to use our collective genius to strategize and share ideas so that our schools become safe places where all children can learn. Um, I, I wanted to just mention that schools are not inherently unsafe places. Uh, they are mostly brick and mortar structures, and they become unsafe when people enter them and begin to behave in ways that are unsafe. And this, of course, would also include social media threats that can be launched against uh, our schools or the school district. So those are things that make our schools unsafe, but the buildings themselves are not unsafe. It's my hope that this evening, that we can, we have a chance to get on a path to better, better awareness, better responsiveness, better collaboration, and better cooperation, hopefully resulting in better academic outcomes for our students because that's our primary function. As a school community, that at least should be our primary function. And then I had a quote I wanted to share before we opened the rooms. Uh, it's a quote from Coretta Scott King. It does not matter how strong your opinions are. If you don't use your power for positive change, you run the risk of becoming a part of the problem. Thank you for that, Mr. Hampton.
You're welcome. I'll uh, also, uh, I'll drop that list of room numbers uh, in the chat too, if you uh, didn't get a chance to write that down. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open up those twelve rooms. And uh, we'll give you an opportunity to to uh, to go to the room that you would like to attend. Um, and again, we may go in and try to help balance some of the sizes a little bit, but I'll drop, I'll uh, open the rooms and then I'll drop those room numbers in the chat again. So feel free to go ahead and uh, join a room.
Again. All right. Thank you to everybody for participating. If your uh, group discussion was anything like mine, you weren't ready to come back. Uh, I felt like we were just getting into the meat of it and, and really getting a chance to have some good discussion. So I'm grateful that we are calling this a tour because that means we're gonna pop up somewhere else and maybe have some more conversations. I heard a lot of really good ideas tonight, and so I'm looking forward to doing more work around this. Um, so what we're gonna do now is I'm hoping people have selected someone that can share out for their group. And so we want to ask each group, because we do need to hear from twelve, to briefly share the high points of what you and your group talked about. I will say that one thing I'm interested in is hearing about potential next steps. You know, as you guys had your conversation, what's one or two next steps that you would envision for trying to move that work forward? And so um, we had one, we had two rooms that discussed behavior. So can we now hear from the room number one?
Uh, thank you so much, Dr. Powell Walker. Um, Dr. Thurman and I had uh, room one, and we had a good mix of parents. Uh, I had a few students who talked, uh, who talked and um, some teachers. Um, one of the things that uh, came out was that uh, we never allowed um, space for, to recognize trauma that students had been exposed to uh, over the eighteen months that uh, uh, students were on COVID. Uh, and students have greater social emotional needs. And uh, there's a strong need for uh, more social workers and um, uh, and counselors, school psychologists, uh, to help uh, students with those needs. Um, we also heard uh, there's a big focus on um, on learning academics, but uh, we can't really uh, prepare students for academics without allowing them uh, some time to uh, get in a healthy, socially, emotional, and behavioral space. And I tried to capture everything in, in that, Dr. Thurman, anything?
Yeah, there seems to be a, a, too much of a focus on testing, on getting students ready. Uh, a student spoke up who talked about the pressures that they feel in class when they're being made fun of, uh, when they are trying to be good students. Uh, also the fact that uh, social media, uh, putting information out on social media and making fun of each other, uh, just not having compassion for each other. Um, oh, and the rigor has been pushed up. But teachers don't have time to form relationships with their students, which is causing problems with behavior.
That's a good one.
All right. Thank you for, from room one. Is that all that you would like to share?
We had more, but I'm, I'm, in, in the interest of time, let's.
Okay. So not to put either of you on the spot, was there anything that you guys, you know, kind of tossed around in terms of a potential next step? Uh, something that you could see happening?
One of the things that, that came up is that we really do need to have more social workers and counselors to work with our students who are struggling, especially that, that two percent of the students who are taking up ninety percent of the time in the classrooms.
So would it be safe to say that you, uh, you guys think a potential next step would be to explore the need for more social workers and counselors, or could we say mental health providers?
Well, exactly, to, to, to work with those uh, social emotional needs of the students so that we can get past that part, so we can get to the learning.
Okay. Thank you, room one. All right, uh, still on the topic of behavior, and now let's go to room two.
Dr. Powell Walker, I will talk for uh, room two for behavior. We didn't have any students in our group, but we had many teachers um, and many parents who also served as teachers or in a capacity, but possibly in another district. And so the conversation was, um, a lot of the conversation was about restorative justice, restorative practices, not having enough time because curriculum was dictating what needed to be done when. And so really wanting more time to have the social and emotional, um, not only the curriculum, but time to watch that transfer. So we heard a lot of discussion about play and what that could look like. Um, a suggestion of, you know, at least thirty minutes, if not an hour. Kids are constantly on technology, and so you don't see that transfer with the social emotional and the executive functioning. Um, maybe visual, so students can really understand if you do behavior, why is the consequence? Um, also recognizing that we have parents that have children in, in multiple buildings. So maybe you have a kindergartner in a pre-K two, you have a student. If, and so when you look at that trajectory, how do you help support? But also, how do you help support the T? And so not necessarily in compensation, in compensation, but how do you be a cheerleader for them? How do you offer maybe more parents, um, adults in the building to help support because it truly takes that community feel and really wanted to support one another and bringing parents in to be part of that restorative conversation?
Okay. So then, a potential next step.
Um, there were several. One of the things that I think was a great suggestion was during summer, we'll have Summer Learning Academy. And so really working on some of those socially emotional things during Summer Learning Academy and taking the time to have restorative circles. Um, that could be something that's more immediate. But I think some of the other things are more of a bigger conversation of how do we, we change? We also heard testing that went along with the technology and constant use of. And so I don't know that there can ever truly be a balance, but how do we support what students need right now?
Okay. All right. Thank you, uh, room two. But we are now gonna move from behavior to fights and consequences. Um, and that, let's hear from room three. This was the room that I was a part of uh, with a number of people, Dr. Bland and uh, I think can't remember everybody, but um, there were quite a few folks in there. So Dr. Bland, I think, has agreed to be our person to share out.
Yes. So uh, we had quite a few secondary leaders um, and, and teachers in our group. And so what we also talked about is using outside resources and their expertise to develop universal strategies. Um, and having a structure of monitoring students' progress and making mid-course um, corrections all around socially emotional learning. We also talked about um, partnering with the community around community building. So instead of waiting for them to come to us, we go to them. I'm in an effort to build uh, stronger relationships. And the last piece was using our data um, to really develop out specific supports that students are needing. So really listening to our students, listening um, to our data to respond to what students are needing in order to help them with calibration of um, socially emotional awareness.
All right. Thank you, um, Dr. Bland. And I wanted to just add to that just a little bit since this was my room. So one of the things we talked about was would it be possible, and this could potentially be a next step if we want to explore it, have partnering, you know, the work that Dr. Stewart is already doing, but continuing that work to build partnerships with outside social service and mental health providers, but in a way that allows them to actually come in and maybe be a part of a roundtable discussion to kind of get down to brass tacks about what we're seeing in terms of concerns around student behavior. And then having them to build uh, you know, some sort of lessons that can be taught in our classrooms to help kids build community. The thought that I had is that, you know, when we care about people, we've, we're less likely to hurt them. So if the kids can, you know, have stronger relationships with each other, then maybe that goes a long way for them treating each other more kindly, being a little bit more uh, tolerant of each other. And so I just wanted to mention that that's a, that's something that would maybe be a larger undertaking, but it's a potential, uh, it's a potential next step. I'm seeing in the chat, how do we send suggestions? If you, if you have some additional suggestions that you want to share that you didn't share in your breakout, please feel free to put those in the chat. Okay, uh, okay, so we're now gonna move on fights and uh, consequences for our room number two.
For? Room two of that, right? In room four?
Oh, I'm looking at what was, I think it's room, yeah.
Yeah. So thank you, thank you, Dr. Powell Walker. Mr. Melendez and I uh, hosted that group. We had some kids, parents, teachers, and staff. Um, so one of the things that came out of the conversation as a solution really is the need for some is the need for some consistency in terms of reporting and investigating, uh, when there are issues. So we have the P S S T world. Some kids don't know about it, but also there's schools that are not consistent or have a clear policy for students. If there is a known issue, so if Dr. Powell Walker and I are gonna fight, there's not necessarily a known place of how to report that if there's not a trusted adult in the building. So coming, each school coming up with a clear procedure for how to report things, but then making sure that things are getting investigated in a manner that's not accusatory, but finding the facts to get the whole story. And then conveying the information to all parties, uh, instead of being accusatory in investigation and/or not investigating enough individuals to find out really what's going on. And then something happens, then it's like, there is a fight then. And it's like, well, we tried to tell you, but nothing was, the feeling was that nothing was done or investigated. So I think one of the outcomes was really having a clear process in each school for reporting things, whether it is through P S S T world, but also what is the investigation process that all families could expect to be filed regardless of what the report is? Um, certainly, I think that is one aspect of what came up. Mr. Melendez, feel free to jump in for other things that we discussed.
Um, and so it was also brought up from a parent who has, is a longtime parent in the district. Um, expressed that she's been in the district for about fifteen years and stated that, um, we could do a better job with engaging our parents, as, but particularly around communicating expectations that are in our schools. So making sure that parents are aware what those expectations are. Um, and being mindful that we're not assuming that they understand some of the jargon that we use as educators. And so taking time to make sure that parents are clear on that, having opportunities for parents to be engaged and to be educated around the processes that are happening within schools, so that they can become active partners in that. Uh, another thing that was, uh, brought up was, um, McClure at home and the success of that program, um, from one of the educators in the building in terms of, um, seeing a change in the school's culture by giving students, um, an opportunity to, uh, for those who are struggling with social responsibility to be able to, it's still engage in the learning process, but from their home, safely from home. Oh, and then one more thing, I'm sorry. Uh, the la, this one was also brought up when we brought, asked the question specifically around how we could prevent fights. Um, it was simply stated, create space where students feel safe, uh, where they can come and listen, um, or where they can come and express what they need to adults. So.
All right, thank you, uh, from room four. Okay, uh, weapons, room five.
So hi, um, my name is Frishan Howes, I'm the Director of Safety and Security, so, um, I'll, um, talk about some of the things that were discussed in our group. Um, so we listened to, um, we had about, I guess, maybe five or six parents that were in our group and some of the things that came up. Um, there was a suggestion that when kids are bringing their bags in in the morning, they're, uh, not clear book bags, that we have more staff available to man those book bags or clear bags to make sure that, uh, no one's going into them. It was also a suggestion that, um, when weapons are brought into school, that we do more things um, involving, um, interventions and not just suspending kids or expelling kids for having weapons, but also doing some sort of counseling or intervention because something's greater going on than just bringing guns to school with that child. Um, kind of what are we doing to eliminate the problem, actually? Then we had another parent, um, who, um, discussed that her nephew is in the sixth grade and go to a school in St. Louis City. And that school, as a sixth grade school, has metal detectors and want to know why we don't have metal detectors in our school. And, uh, we don't want to wait too late for something to happen to have metal detectors, so we had a small discussion about that. Um, about should we or should we not have metal detectors in our schools? And that was our.
All right, thank you, uh, Ms. Howes, I appreciate that. All right, we will now move on to weapons, room number six.
Good evening, um, I'll go ahead and summarize. I'm one of the assistant supes who, um, helps su, support schools. So a couple of the things that were brought up, we had mainly staff with us, so, um, we appreciate their input. Um, one of the things brought up was, uh, hearings, not only for just fights and weapons, but threats. You know, we have seen some increase in threats and making sure that students understand the seriousness of that. Um, also just, uh, plan, being better prepared, so being proactive rather than reactive. And so, um, specifically what that plan could look like. Um, making sure that we have those people that are on staff as part of that plan. Um, so a plan for it, specific incidents, making sure that we communicate, um, what that plan is, and then giving updates on that plan, making sure the communication is tight. And then also part of that, eh, eh, that we had in our pamphlet was, um, increasing security, especially on our campuses that are larger and that have multiple buildings. Um, again, to help be proactive rather than reactive and strategically placing them um, where needed, and in particular McClure was mentioned with the multiple access points and buildings. Um, Terry, was there anything else?
No, the, I would, uh, add to that is that when you said more security, they actually specifically said more security officers.
Thank you.
Dr. Hazel, this is Dr. Gerald. Can you, can you share that comment you made about the, I think you said something about doors at McClure, something?
Yeah, it was mainly, it's, uh, especially for, uh, larger campus like McClure with multiple buildings. Um, I think the exact thing was increasing, basically having a security officer in each building posted, let's see if I can find it.
A security post in every building, uh, each building at McClure. And then some, there was another comment about some other schools saying just more security, so there's more than one.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we will now move on to parent involvement, room number seven.
Okay, hi, everybody. Um, okay, so we had some good conversation in our, um, in our room. And so I'm gonna try to go through these rather quickly. Um, so some of the suggestions, uh, for more parent involvement um, was to modernize how we communicate with our parents. Um, utilizing, um, more technology platform or more platforms. Um, I think we had a teacher that said that she, um, she communicates with her parents on Class Dojo, that's something that they can, they have access to twenty-four seven. Um, we also talked about a grassroots effort, um, to parent engagement, which I really did like. I like the idea of going and knocking on doors, on parents' doors, um, to find out what's going on with, uh, you know, what's happening with that family, you know, where, where do they need help or supports? Um, I think that that's a, me personally, I think that's a powerful tool. Um, and then what else do we have? Um, and then we also have, you know, establishing that relationship early on with the parents, so like pre-K kindergarten, making sure we build that rapport, uh, you know, out the gate right away. Uh, making sure we build up that trust with our parents. And then, let's see. And then creating different opportunities, uh, for parents to be, um, engaged. Be more creative with how we communicate. And those are just some of the ones. Uh, and then just, um, it was also mentioned that, you know, in this, um, post, I guess, in COVID environment, just trying to, you know, in light of all of the, you know, new ways we have to do things, just trying to still create that warm welcoming atmosphere for our kiddos. And that's here, okay, and I think that's about it. That's about it. We had a really good conversation, really good suggestion.
Sounds like you did. Thank you for that, uh, Ms. Bush. Okay, we will now move to parent involvement, room number eight.
Yes, thank you. We, um, we had a great conversation as well and, and a, a, a lot of dialogue. And so just a few of the main topics that came up is, um, having more interaction with the school to build more relationships um, between students and parents and families in the school. Um, and not just interacting when there's an issue, but, you know, being able to build those relationships at the beginning. Um, having outside of the box type of opportunities for parents to get engaged. So more volunteer opportunities, having, um, you know, where parents can set up a booth and maybe, you know, sell candy or an ice cream social or, you know, be monitors in the building or serve as a crossing guard if, if a school is at a, you know, major intersection. And just being able to, students and, and, um, the engagement elevates when, um, parents are seen in the building. And so just being able to do some of those things as well as having more parent events, um, like donuts with dad, muffins with mom, which COVID has affected that, but also some out of the box things like, you know, a daddy-daughter dance or, you know, a, a gentleman-daughter dance and a mother-son brunch. Um, just some of those things that may, uh, be able to be helpful. And then also looking at, um, you know, utilizing parents who can come in and work in the building, um, whether it be helping with, um, uh, particularly like, in some schools you'll see where there's, uh, murials or things that are painted of positive good messages and just things where it creates and builds a more community feel within the building. Um, and, uh, more information consistently coming from the buildings of keeping parents abreast of, of activities and opportunities for them to get involved. Um, and I think that's about it.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, I appreciate that. All right, we're now gonna move on to, uh, staff safety, room nine.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Um, I had the opportunity to, um, co-facilitate with Director of Safety Hogghead. And, uh, we had some robust solutions, um, around staff safety. Um, one of the, uh, critical, um, pieces that came up more than once was the idea that there are protocols in place um, around safety and training that, um, we need to make sure are being followed. Um, the other piece is making sure that, um, we are providing additional, uh, solutions for, uh, students that may be dysregulated. Uh, for instance, providing, um, a room, uh, where students will be able to connect, share, emote, uh, safely. And also to increase, um, our behavior intervention staff that are really trained to help kids, uh, de-escalate, uh, and get into a better space. Um, additionally, uh, we talked about making sure that, uh, go back to or enhance the opportunity for people to get to know each other, really looking also at the states of, uh, emotional and mental connection uh, for staff members as well. Um, because of what has happened with, um, the pandemic, um, sometimes there's a default uh, towards virtual meetings all the time or handling usually over the phone. And there is a need for, to recognize the human connection of, uh, what we're doing. We also need to recognize that safety is not just physical, it's mental as well. Uh, so we need to make sure that we're thinking about, um, from the staff standpoint, you know, uh, how do we create an overall culture of safety to include? How do we help, uh, students develop better ways in which to, uh, connect and, uh, communicate with staff members? Um, because it is a wear and tear for staff, some staff members to have to continually, uh, be subjected to uh, difficult, uh, behavior, maybe even hostile words, uh, that may, might come from students. And that we need to make sure that we're involving, uh, parents more in, uh, basically partnering and being able to, uh, create, uh, a situation where, uh, a student understands that parent, teachers, administration are working together for the student. Uh, not to necessarily create some kind of, of wall to say, you know, that, that's hostile, but to say, hey, we're all kind of working together. Uh, and that also, um, based upon some other obligations that have, um, been added for guided counselors to potentially add more counseling staff as well, uh, because of the additional need.
All right, thank you, uh, very much for that. All right, we will now move on to staff safety, room number ten.
Hello, everybody. That, um, Dr. Jadali and I both facilitated that, that, um, breakout room, and we had some great discussions. It was mostly teachers, um, and so there are a lot of things that were brought up. Um, one of the things, um, was about communication. There are traveling teachers, are traveling social workers, and a lot of times they come back to the building and there's police presence. They don't know what's going on, they don't know whether they should go in or stay out. Um, we used to have a crisis app, and so one of the solutions was perhaps we could have some kind of a communication piece where if there is a situation going on in the building and the traveling teachers would be able to be communicated with, or people would know what's going on. So there's, um, not a lot of fear within the people that are in that building and on what's going on and have better communication that way. Um, there were several people that said students should, um, have an elective in the middle of the day in a high school. They need to be creative and, um, a lot of times they don't get a chance to move and be creative and experience the joy. Um, so a lot of times if they can get some of that out of their system, that would help. And so like in the middle schools and high schools, they could maybe, um, have something more, like more electives in the middle so that they can kind of get a break and, um, take care of some of that. Um, empathy and concern, um, staff are involved in incidents where, um, they might break up a fight and get hurt or things like that. And so, um, you know, having staff meetings after the incidents that allow for debriefing and to create a sense of community. Um, someone had mentioned that earlier, because we're more in a virtual mode, we've lost a lot of that face time. So, um, a lot of times those meetings are, you know, things are communicated via email or text, which creates miscommunication and you lose a sense of connection with every, with one another and it, you know, causes mistrust. So, um, having more one-to-one communications with each other. Um, very, very strong, that everybody felt that we need more staff, we need more security in the schools, more behavioral specialists, more social workers. Um, the teachers can't do everything, and so we really need those types of specialists, because that can really help out. Um, one of the teachers at North said that, you know, they, they have several floors and they don't even have enough security guards to have officers, security officers to have one for every floor. So, um, they definitely felt like we needed more security, more social workers, more behavioral people like that. Um, hierarchy of consequences, so students, um, you know, kind of making sure that consequences are addressed whenever the students are making comments about teachers or making inappropriate comments to teachers and physically attacking them. There just needs to be, make sure that we're really addressing those consequences. Um, and then book bags, making sure that the clear book bags are strictly enforced. You know, they're seeing a lot of that not happening. And then Dr. Jadali had one more.
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Madrisikin. As we, has been mentioned already, uh, appears that majority of the comments were focused on regarding security guards. And, you know, it was very clear that everybody feels like they need to have more security guards on duties, especially during and even after school hours. And at some times there, there are concerns where there has been, uh, only one or two to cover various types of games and activities and fights after hours in parking lots and so forth. And really, the potential next step, the suggestions that they, was made was to recruit veterans as security officers, since they already have been trained and have more, they're more seasoned and could help us tremendously. That's your.
All right, I'm sorry, thank you so much for that. Uh, that was, uh, staff safety, room number ten. And we will now hear from our two general solutions rooms. We have room eleven. Uh, is there a representative from room eleven?
Yes, hi, I'm Liz Davenport, and, um, I co-facilitated with Levi Matthews. And, um, so since we were the general, um, room, I have a, a lot of what we talked about was addressed in all of your comments today, but I'll highlight a few. Um, the first one was identification of students and really being able to identify, um, all students. And the hoods and full-face coverings really make it difficult to identify students. So, um, maybe reconsidering, um, students being able to wear hoods and full-face coverings, um, for safety measures. Um, for parent involvement, so making sure, like to increase. Um, for parent involvement, so making sure, like to increase parent involvement through um better communication, um communicating even when there are fights, number of fights, things like that, just so parents are on the lookout for um potential um things that could occur. So just better communication. Um, also just engaging parents in the process. Um, bringing, when possible, both sets of parents to the table to be a part of the restorative conversation in order to restore the relationships between the kids and the families. Um, addressing social and emotional needs of students, staff and families. And the um in order to do that, adding additional staff from therapists to um social workers, um just additional staff to address the social emotional needs of not just um students, but also staff and families. And then um offering, one of my favorite ones, um offering incentives, positive incentives. So we've talked a lot about what are we doing about behaviors? What do we, you know, what are we doing to be safe? But really taught, really putting together a systematic way to um offer positive incentives for all, for everyone, all stakeholders, parents, students, staff, um to positive incentives to put your best foot forward every day when you walk in building. So Levi, do you, did it, is there anything else I should highlight or that you'd want to highlight?
Well, I do definitely want to um speak on the the importance of communication. It felt like um like overall it kind of wrapped up into that because it seemed like parents want to be more involved. They want to know more about what's going on in buildings. They, you know, people express wanting to hear more from, like in these meetings, wanting to hear more from administrators and and staff members to understand what they go through so that, you know, they can form their opinions as well as offer their help, you know, accordingly. And it just seems like there needs to be like, especially on a building level, um just kind of looking at that communication between parents and how parents can work with the staff to make the place a better place.
All right. Thank you uh for your input, room eleven, and we will now hear from room twelve. Um, our our final room, general solutions.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I co-facilitated this room with Dr. Thomas. Um, and we have a student that was so enthusiastic about speaking tonight. So I'm gonna introduce um Miss Skylar Brown from JW.
Um, so what we talked about in our group was um we talked about how skipping. Um, we said that skipping, we should like people, the kids should be um escorted to the restroom because most kids run around when they asked to go to the restroom. Uh, we also talked about, um, we also talked about, we also talked about how um in advisory we should um uh we should have more academic in there, more education and advisory. And we, the last thing that we talked about was um uh, we also talking about bullying um and how the kids should stay apart and be a distance from each other so it doesn't start a fight. And that's all.
Well, thank you, Skylar. I'm really glad that you were here and able to speak. It's good to hear a student voice on what we're what we're discussing this evening. So, you know, I tried to take some really good notes. I'm hoping that somebody else was taking some notes and hopefully we're gonna save the chat because I saw some some absolutely fabulous ideas popping up in the chat. I do want, I don't want to put Erica Brooks on the spot, but I thought she put some really uh good ideas in the chat and I wanted to invite her to share a little bit if she's open to that. Ms. Brooks, are you open to sharing a little bit with us about what you're thinking?
Uh, yes, I am. Um, I thank you very much for for allowing me to have this moment. Um, I spoke with Dr. Bland uh a few weeks ago. And the thing about it was for me, I know at this moment with the COVID going on, people losing family members and their friends and stresses are going on and every, everybody's on survival mode right now. So when it comes to actually uh being focused on work or focused on teaching something or learning something, it's a, it's a shocking state right now for everybody to focus on that. So I was talking to her about a lot of things that I had mentioned. Um, like one thing that I mentioned about the meditation, being able to take the mindset of whatever you came through the door with, stop it at that point, having some kind of moment. Maybe it's a minute, maybe it's two minutes to be able to have some kind of a a yoga or stretch or something where you mentally take everybody, the teachers. Because the one thing about this whole thing, you can't just take the mirror and point at somebody else. You have to, you have to uh be able to uh see yourself as well as others to be able to understand how to connect with each other. So to be able to have that mental moment before you go into instructional uh a point would be a great thing for everybody. Um, you could uh have affirmation statements throughout the building, like in the restrooms or in in the classrooms and the offices. So as a kid and administrator, because one thing I don't want you to do is to re uh forget about yourselves. You know, because everybody needs some positive love and positive connections to uh reaffirm who you are and what your purpose is. So, so, so like I said, I want to thank you all very much for allowing me to talk, but uh some positive incentives to be able to include everybody from where they're dealing with life right now with this COVID nineteen.
Yeah, thank you so much for your comments, Ms. Brooks, and for being here. I want to thank everybody who took time out of their evening to be with us. And as we have said before, as a board, this is just the beginning of this work. I'm seeing some other things about doing sessions like this for students. Um, I don't want to leave out anybody or make anybody feel like they haven't been heard, but I see a lot of really good thoughts in the chat. So I'm hoping we're saving that so we can go back and look at those things. Um, this is the part where I have to go back and look at the script and make sure I'm where I'm supposed to be uh in what needs to be said.
I think you did everything, Dr. Powell Walker. So um it worked to your, you know, your wrap-up.
Okay, so then um just a second.
Dr. Powell Walker.
Yes.
I am so sorry to interrupt you, but there was someone in the chat, Amber. Said she was in two different um uh groups, uh breakout rooms, and yet neither neither one of them mentioned her concern. Um, I know that you're busy with other things and she's in the chat. I offered my email um in the chat if she would like to speak to me, but I'd also like to, yeah, it, I know we're looking at time and we want to value everybody who has time, but we also want to hear that voice.
Sure. Um, would you like to speak at this time? Is the.
I was trying to unmute my phone, my thing. But yes, in both groups, I had to accept. The first, initially, I wasn't sure of which group I needed to be into. But Ferguson Florence sent uh promotes inclusiveness in the classrooms for special needs kids. But with COVID and everything's going on, realistically, there's not enough resources to provide the care or the instruction that these kids need. Or like someone else mentioned earlier on, how these kids are taking ninety percent of the day up and it's taking away from the other kids and their learning. Or even keeping my child safe, when there's another child in the classroom that's acting out or causing her to fear, they, there's going to be another outburst towards her. And this is just in pre-K through second, like she's in second grade. She's been in the classroom with this child for a year. Granted, COVID, they were at home all last year. But now they're back in the classroom and there's been a persistent problem since September. I've emailed the principal, I've spoken with the teacher. I I mean, what am I supposed to do to keep my child safe?
Okay, now my guess is that there is likely um an assistant superintendent on here um or Dr. Davis who may want to speak to that as far as who could connect with you to help you kind of work through that.
That's all I was asking. And that's what I asked in each group. They said, what's the suggestion? Then my kind of suggestion would be to properly fund and resource the schools so that they can effectively provide inclusiveness in the classrooms for these students. That's not fair for the other kids.
Right. And so if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, your child is in a classroom with another child who requires additional support with managing their behavior. And because a lot of time is being spent supporting that student, your concern that it's taking away from the learning experience of your child, right?
And my child doesn't feel safe. His outbursts are just that bad.
Okay. All right.
Dr. Powell Walker, uh what I did, what I did was, uh, hey, Ms. Amber, this is Joe Davis. I put my, I put my, my name in my email in the chat. Uh, everybody has it. So if you or anyone else has a specific concern, just uh send me a personal email, send it to me. And if you will, yeah, don't put your child's name, just give me your name, a phone number, email. Of course, I'll have your email and then the the school. That way we can get on it, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So I want to thank you to everyone. Just thank you so much for being here tonight. I'm gonna be totally transparent and just tell you, I had a lot of anxiety over the last couple of weeks about what this evening was going to look like. And I'm just so grateful that all of you showed up with what I feel like was a mindset focused on trying to find solutions and trying to move things forward so we can do good things for our kids. So I truly appreciate. Or we call for the meeting to be adjourned. As you probably guessed, I've got a closing quote, like I had an opening quote, I've got a closing quote. Um, and the closing quote is, never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. And that's what I think I saw tonight on this Zoom call, a group of thoughtful, committed citizens. And so I'm looking forward to your continued engagement in this work. Uh, that quote was by Margaret. I would like to um ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, before I say meeting adjourned or before we call for the vote, I'm sorry. I wanted to say to the community to please stay tuned because additional information is going to be coming out to say kind of where we're going to be going in the, in terms of next steps with this work. Mrs. Janice, will you please call for the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Tyson.
Hi.
Mrs. Hogshead. Dr. Thurman.
Aye.
Dr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Bush.
Hi.
Dr. Graves.
Hi.
Dr. Powell Walker.
Aye.
I voted aye. Hi, it was muted. Sorry. And thank you, everybody, for coming. Great job.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned. Have a good evening.
Okay.
And by the way, room six was the best.
No.
Actually, I think that was viral.
No.
I don't know.
Good night, Terry.
All right.
Excuse me, excuse me, guys. Will this be on YouTube? Will this be on YouTube?
So if you. It will. Yes, it will. It'll take us a little bit to get it um to get it transferred. We'll edit out the chunk while you all were in the breakout rooms, but yes, it will be.
Okay.
All right. So good night.
Bye-bye.